Good evening and welcome to the Milford Select Board Meeting of June 10, 2024. 6:00 PM in Room 3 of Town Hall. First item on our agenda this evening is the signing of the warrant.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we sign the warrant for May 6, 2024. Can I second that, Mr. Chairman?
And I would make that unanimous as well. Next agenda item, under Agenda Item A is the approval of the regular session meeting minutes for May 6, 2024, and May 20, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the regular session, May 6, 2024. I do want to point out, Mr. Chairman, as you may recall, that I arrived 20 minutes late. I was tied up on the mass char bike. So the first 14 items, I was not involved in, so I will not vote as it relates to those. I will vote as it relates to the other minutes, 16 through 31. I make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
And I make a motion that we accept all the minutes. That was brought to us, too, for May 6, regular scheduled meeting.
And I would make that unanimous as well. Next item is the approval of the executive session minutes for May 6, 2024.
I believe we had the regular session first, Mr. Chairman, of May 20.
Oh, I put them both together, but it's okay.
So I make a motion that we approve the minutes of May 20, 2024, regular session.
And I second that, too.
And I would make that unanimous.
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the executive session minutes of May 6, 2024. And I second that, too, Mr. Chairman.
And I would make that unanimous as well. Our next agenda item this evening is public hearings. We do have a public hearing this evening. National Grid in Verizon, New England, pole location on Pond Street. We do have a gentleman here, I believe, from Verizon.
From National Grid.
National Grid. Come on right up, sir, and identify yourself, please.
Good evening. I'm Michael Parham from National Grid, work at his office. This pole petition is for an extension of existing service lines on the road. Pole line on the sketch is where it ends, and it needs to be extended further to feed cells from that new pole tent. So that's why we're there for that property.
Okay. Any member have any questions?
I don't. That's on Pond Street, and it does, it goes from the pole, and then it's underground, right? The others, I believe, are close.
The pole line that goes, keeps going through it, I think it's just for telephone.
Right.
Oh, any questions?
Yeah, no, I don't, too. It was well described in the information that we've got, and I have no problems or questions with that. It's an extension of the pole, which is fine.
This being a public hearing, is anybody in the general audience, in the general public, Chris, anybody online?
We do have one person online, Carrie Hayes, but she has not raised her hand to speak, so I don't.
Okay. That being said, can I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the recommendation of Mass Electric Company doing business in National Grid, Verizon, New England, as it relates to poles and underground wiring on Pond Street, which is a very quiet street, very close to Sacred Heart. I second that, too, Mr. Chairman.
And I would gladly make that unanimous. Thank you very much, sir. Have a good evening.
Bye, Mike. Take care.
Okay. Our next agenda item is scheduled appointments this evening. We do not have any scheduled appointments. With that, we'll move to the next agenda item, which is the Town Administrator's Report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just three items tonight. One, Brian Long, Chair of the Public Advisory Transportation Committee, has informed me that the MWRTA will be providing the town with benches to be installed at bus stops, at certain bus stops in town. He will meet with his committee and the Highway Surveyor to discuss picking up them and then installing them. Just want to thank Brian. He's kind of almost, become almost the one man show with that committee, and he's doing a great job, and I just want to thank him and bring that to the board's attention. Second item is, I want to thank State Representative Brian Murray. He secured a $50,000 earmark to be used for improvements to the Fino Field Athletic and Baseball Field Complex. Again, want to thank him for his work to add this to the state budget. Again, we're still awaiting the final budget to be approved by the governor, and hopefully that will be included. Also want to thank our state senator, Becca Roush. She's secured a $20,000 earmark to be used to upgrade the sprinkler system at Town Hall, which is a project I've had on the Capitol Plan for a few years now, and I think it's time to get it done. So I want to thank her. Again, hopefully it'll be included in the governor's budget. We're still awaiting. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Any member have any questions for the Town Administrator?
I think it's fantastic that the representative and the senator at state level are reaching out to assist the local communities.
Same here, too. I thank you, Rick, too, for that, as well as for our state representative or senator, and also with Mr. Long, too. I think those benches are very important. Usually see when those, when that bus goes by and whatnot, they're either standing up or sitting down the steps of the Town Hall or whatever, at least they have a place to, it's more or less for them.
Yeah.
For them in that particular service.
Sure.
Anyway, thank you for that.
If you could, Rick, let everybody know how much we appreciate everything they've done.
Yes.
Okay. Next agenda item is old business. Does any member have any old business?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
I do not, either, Mr. Chairman.
I do not, as well. And with that, we move on to the next agenda item, which is new business. First item under new business is the Finance Director, reallocation of unused ARPA funds. Zach with us, or?
As, Zach is not.
Take the punches.
Yeah, Chris.
Okay.
Chris brought this forward.
So the use of those funds is for the, it's a joint venture between the, can't talk today, Department of Corrections over at 130.
Maple.
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 And Town of Milford.
Yep.
For a long time, we've had an issue with dead spots for our radios for our fire department and police department. And while exploring many options to try to increase that, just past the October Town Meeting, we were given the opportunity by working with the Department of Corrections and the Mass State Police at the Maple Street Building, and they offered us an unlimited easement to that antenna, which was a 250-foot antenna, which would not only cover all of Milford, but a vast, vast range around the area. The Department of Corrections and myself and Chief Nelson, working with Brian Murray, to draft an MOU, which is basically a contract for usage. We got a contract that allows us the easement to the antenna at any given time. We're allowed to put our equipment in there, they're allowed to put their equipment in there, and the costs are being split approximately 60/40. So they're paying about 40%, which is the cost to bring the antenna up to spec, get it ready, and then our costs are to put our equipment in there and to replace whatever electrical needs to be done in that space. And that will allow us to extend our radio coverage well beyond anything we thought we could do in the first place. Now, getting access to an antenna of that size, or just a radio tower of that size, is very uncommon in the state for any city or town, and being able to get one at this low cost is tremendous.
Thank you very much. Any member?
Just in looking at this, and it's something that we've dealt with for a number of years, and we actually explored, we did propagation studies with various radio companies, so that, you know, Motorola, who we purchased from, and they can do those studies and tell you your coverage areas based on where you put one of these satellites. If you understand the system, it's UHF. UHF, the radio at the police station, they can talk out and they can connect with every portable radio, every cruiser, fire engine, radio. It's when you're talking back. So the portable radio inside a building, it's not going to make it back. So it has to go through a satellite, and the satellites have voters. So if you have multiple satellites, they will actually decide which one's the strongest signal to send back. So it's clear. So if you get an officer that's having trouble, or you get a firefighter that is inside a building, and it's a May day, they're in trouble. Today, we might not hear them. We'll get the signal when they're in trouble, but we won't get any verbal. So this is critical to the safety of those personnel, because those are the very personnel that are going to help people get out of those situations.
Our current antenna points are the Highland Street Water Tower.
Correct.
Fire Station, Police Station. Fortunately, I believe the only high location is the water tower, but that's not quite high enough. This 250-foot antenna, radio tower, covers all of Milford and the low-lying areas, and it's perfect for the repeater that we're going to need to push that.
And the only option we had at one point, myself and Fire Chief John Tuohy, when he was the Fire Chief, was to put a pole, so you're, take your telephone pole, and it had to be one and a half times the height, and it was going to be on a back plot up on Fortune Boulevard, because that was a high point they could find where the company was willing to give us just to put the pole in, to put that repeater. The cost was far higher than this. So he found a resource that already exists that gives you better coverage, you have a long-term relationship with the state. This is win-win-win all the way around, and it's huge. And Chris, I praise you for doing it. It's really, really is a huge public safety issue, not only for those first responders, but for the people that they're trying to help, especially now that we've put more apartments built in.
Right.
If you look at where we've put them, you go in there with that portable radio, it's like carrying a brick.
Right.
You know, so this is going to make the difference of how they can help people. Good job, real good job.
Thank you, Michael. Excellent job, too. Thank you. And like Tom said, too, you know, upgrading public safety technology is extremely crucial, not only for the people, the first responders, but also for the residents as well. But we're also very fortunate to have another location to have this in. And I, from what I understand, locations are very important, because you need a clear area. You can't have any mountains or hills or rocks or trees or whatnot to get into the way, you know, and like I said, it's very important, and we're fortunate to have that. And also hats off, too, to the water company for their financial prudence in keeping the cost down by building that pump station that they have on Congress Street. That's where the money came from, I believe, right? According to Zach's letter, it wasn't as.
Yeah, it was one of the one projects.
Right. You know, so like I said, that they did very well with that as well. So that's what you call teamwork, you know what I mean? And when you work as a team, you can accomplish a lot, between yourself and the water company and the Department of Corrections helping us out as well. Like I said, everything falls into play, and Tom was mentioning, too, upgrading public safety technology is very crucial, not only for the first responders, but also for the residents.
Given the size of the radio tower, it also is going to help them mutually also. So between Semlek and you have the surrounding towns.
Right.
Getting them access to that 250-foot antenna, kind of get them access to most of Worcester County, the whole way down to the form.
Right, you could reach a lot more.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, thank you for that.
Well, another example, and again, Chris, thank you very much, and all the people that are involved with you, but it's an example of where money basically doesn't get spent. We don't just sit on it. We turn around and say, okay, what is the next area that needs to be addressed? Public safety is, everybody knows, is so important, and here we are, able to take the funds that weren't spent, reallocate the funds, upgrade our public safety systems, and protect the most important thing, is, as Selectman Aloffman talks about it all the time, being a former police chief is protecting the citizens of this community. And here's another classic example of that.
Just the reuse of ARPA funds, so it doesn't touch our.
Exactly.
Exactly. Perfect.
So thank you very much.
Everyone benefits.
With that, entertain a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the recommendation of the Finance Director and the IT Director.
I second that, too, Mr. Chairman.
And I would gladly make that unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Great job.
And next item under new business is a, from Bella Pizzeria, a common vicula license, and we do have a department head review form here. Town planner, okay, with no change. Tax collector, there are no outstanding taxes. Town treasurer, no outstanding tax liens. Fire chief has no objections. Police chief has approved it. And the Board of Health, all violations are corrected. So again, this is a common vicula license for Bella Pizza, which I believe is located in the old Bills Pizza, which is on 126 Main Street in Milford. Looks like the hours of operation are pretty much the same. And with that, I'm motion, ask for a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the common vicula license of Bella Pizzeria from the applicant, Patrick Joseph, of 126 Main Street.
And I second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I would make that unanimous. Next item is the Milford 4th of July Parade Committee, the acceptance of the gift from the Milford Cultural Council. The name of the gift is the 2024 Milford 4th of July Parade. The purpose is for the 4th of July Parade. The amount of the gift is $1,000, which is being donated by the Milford Cultural Council, and the contact person with the Milford Cultural, Cultural Council is Jerry Edens. And with that, I'll have a motion to accept the gift, please.
Chairman, I make a motion that we allow the acceptance of a gift of $1,000 from the Milford Cultural Council to the 2024 Milford 4th of July Parade.
And I second that, too, and also, as we all know, to thank our Milford Cultural Council that continued to contribute to the vitality of the town by contributing this, this money for the 4th of July Parade, which is very popular with our Milford residents. So I second that gladly.
And I will make that unanimous as well. Thank you very much to the Milford Cultural Council. Next item under new business is the Town Administrator, the appointment of a Select Board Member to the Milford High School Building Committee. Mr. Valani?
Yep, by the bylaw and the statute, you're required to have a member from this board, one of the you three gentlemen. You also will get three appointments to the building committee. We will probably do those on the next, we will do those on the next meeting. We have received a number of applications from very many people, very interested. I think it's up to at least 15 or 16.
Beautiful.
But tonight, I thought you could, if you would so choose, to get the appointment from this board. Taken care of.
Mr. Chairman, given that the other, you and my other colleague, Paul Mazakelli, served on the school committee, I think your knowledge of the school system is more in-depth than mine. I am inclined to make a motion for either of you who would be interested.
Thank you for that, Tom.
Both interested, I'll flip a coin.
Yeah, what I was going to recommend is going to say that, you know, where by Michael being on the committee, he's also chair of this committee, as we all know, this, this board, but also he was on the school committee for nine years. He served three terms, and the time I served, we were doing the Brookside School, which you were familiar with at the time, and also I got off the sixth year, and you continued with the Woodland School as well. And we all know the responsibilities of what a school committee member has. I mean, here we are, you know, stewards of the taxpayers' dollars, which is more than half of our total budget, goes toward education and whatnot, and you had nine years of dealing with that as well. You also have the ability to communicate the function, responsibility, and the aim of this new school coming up to the general public. So my colleague, Tom Aloffman, I'm going to recommend, too, that we would appoint Michael as our representative to that school.
I will make that motion. I make a motion that we appoint Michael Walsh as our representative to the school building committee. And I agree with you, Paul, that, you know, you folks were, this is the critical point in time, putting brick and mortar down. This is the point where you're developing that and where you're trying to receive funds from the state, as well as educate the community of what their costs are going to be. So I, and both of you have that experience. So I make a motion that we appoint Michael Walsh as our representative.
I second that gladly. Thank you for that.
I make that unanimous, and thank you both for your support in that position. Thank you very, very much. Okay, next agenda, next item under new business is a, again, Four Friends Market, doing business as Olivera's Market, change of name, new partnership, and a new corporation. So we do, again, have a department head review form, and building commissioner allowable use. Town planner, okay, no change of actual use. Tax collector, no outstanding taxes. Town treasurer, no tax liens. Fire chief, no objections. Police chief approved, and the Board of Health has no issues. And again, that is located at 130 Main Street in Milford. It's a common vicula license. It's an amendment to an existing license. And with that, I would motion, ask for a motion?
Chairman, I make a motion that we allow the amendment to common vicula license to change the name from Brazuca Market to Four Friends Market, LLC DBA Olivier's Market at 130 Main Street.
I second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I would make that unanimous. And next item under new business, we have a resignation from the Finance Committee. I have a letter which I will read. This is a letter sent to the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator from Finance Committee Member Chris Morin. It is with deep regret that I am providing my resignation from the Milford Finance Committee. For over 10 years, I have done my best to serve the residents of Milford to my best ability. This is my birthplace and the town I love with all my heart, but unfortunately, life events have led me to this decision. I feel the town is in great hands with the current committee and will continue to thrive under the impeccable financial department headed by Zach Taylor. I do this with a heavy heart, but put great thought into spending more time with my family. I thanked this Select Board and the previous ones for the opportunity to serve this town. Most of all, I want to thank all the members of FinCom I had the pleasure to serve with. I will continue to serve as a Town Meeting Member and always give whatever and whatever this great town needs. Thank you. Sincerely, Chris Morin.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the resignation of Chris Morin from the Finance Committee, and I would ask that we direct the Town Administrator to send a correspondence to Chris thanking him for his service to the community.
And I second that, too, and thank Chris for over 10 years of service to that important committee, and I second that.
I will make that unanimous, and as well like to say thank you very much, Chris. 10 years is a long time to serve on that committee, and we appreciate everything that you did. Thank you very much. And the last item under new business is the building commissioner looking for an alternative assistant inspector. This is a letter from John Erickson, our building commissioner, to our Town Administrator, Rick Valani. Attorney Valani, as you are aware, the Department of Inspections has one part-time wiring inspector and one part-time plumbing and gas inspector, each working 24 hours per week. In their absence, there is one assistant wiring inspector, myself since 2003, and one assistant plumbing and gas inspector, Benny Pinto, since 1999, who will fill in on an as-needed basis. To better serve the public, I am requesting that we appoint a second assistant to each of the two positions. There is no added cost associated with these proposed positions, as the newly appointed assistants would simply be on-call for when either of the current assistants are unavailable. There have been times in recent years when the availability of either myself or Mr. Pinto was limited when coverage was needed for various reasons. With your approval, I would like to work with Town Administrator and our HR Director to post these positions, which is of no added cost to the town. These are, these positions are not benefit eligible. With that, I would accept a motion.
I'd make a motion that we allow the building commissioner to hire, to, to appoint second assistants for plumbing and electrical. You know, it's just, it's kind of like managing the Celtics. You can't leave five people out there. So if you can't, you know, so it's a matter of filling slots, no extra cost, because if one's person is doing it, the other's not. I think we should allow him to have that professional staff, and they're just on-call people that are going to make a difference to the people in the community. I make a motion that we authorize the building commissioner to make those appointments.
Right. And I second that, too, and I like what John mentioned, too, to better serve the public and, you know, seeing the inspectors where I've been around them for so many, so many years, it's very important, like I said, to get your work inspected, be it various wiring or electrical work being done, or various plumbing work being done. And then not only, you know, and if you can't get an inspector to prove that it was done according to code, the resident is the one that's having the hard time with it, because they can't use their facilities and whatnot until, until it is inspected. So that would expedite things, and not only, again, you know, help the tradesmen themselves who actually did the work, because without the approval, they don't get paid by, by the customer or the person that did the work for. So it's fairness to the residents, fairness to the, to the tradesperson, and I think it was, it showed good department head management that John did by asking for this, and I definitely approve that.
And I would make that unanimous as well. Next agenda item is invitation to speak. Is anybody in the audience, invitation to speak?
Paula?
Yes.
Stay right there. Stay right there.
Right. Thank you.
Chris?
Thank you, Chris.
My name is Paula Karras, and I'm a resident of Milford. I have been for quite a while. I've been at the Housing Authority for about five years now. I come before the board because of problems that I'm having, unfortunately, with the police department. The registry suspended my license a couple of years ago, and I had to deal with that. And my state representative, and at that time, Ryan Fatman, had written registry, wondering how long an appeal would be, because I wanted to appeal the decision not to reinstate me. I was suspended because I went over a small curb at the end of my driveway, my right wheel. It's like half a curb in height and in length. And at that time, an officer, Foss, went to the registry, and he said that I was an immediate threat. And I had summoned the record from the police department at that time. I didn't see any medical evidence, so I kept driving, and I was charged twice by the police department for continuing to drive, even though I told them that the police didn't make their burden and whatnot. So I, I had to deal with that, and so the two cases came up in the Milford District Court, and I won both of them through a counter defense of law. You know, it was based upon law and an affidavit of facts of what had happened to me, and the judge dismissed the cases. I wanted to appeal the registry's decision not to reinstate me, and I didn't get the appeal. It was supposed to be scheduled for February 16 of this year. I never got the appeal. I wrote the, the chairwoman for the Division of Insurance, Audrey, I can't think of her last name right now, but I wrote her about the appeal, and I never got the appeal. So I wrote Brian Murray stating that I thought my civil rights were violated. And, you know, I'm all for following the law, and I waited for two years. I don't want anyone to think that I'm unlawful. You know, I mean, I know what meets the burden, and I've been pulled over a few times in Milford, and I've won every single case. Every case that I have been pulled over in different towns as well, I've won every single one of them. I'm on like 12 or 13, you know? And so at this point, I wrote Brian Murray, and I said, hey, I didn't get the, the appeal. I want to continue to drive. Today, I found out, though, there's some light at the end of the tunnel. I did find out that supposedly I'm going to get an appeal by the registry of motor vehicles in two weeks. However, I was pulled over again today. They took my car, and I'm wondering, you know, if Brian Murray is writing, and he seems to think that my civil rights are being violated by the state, and you can't violate civil rights, we know that, under the Massachusetts Constitution, under the US Constitution, we can't violate civil rights. So I drove, and I had two cops pull me over, and I explained to them I never got an appeal by the registry. You know, my civil rights were violated. He insists, though, on going with the registry, and I've been getting this all along. So he did cite. So he did cite me. He cited me with driving at, with no registration and no insurance. And I explained to him about Mr. Foss, this is getting my license suspended for going over that small curb. I guess I want to say, gentlemen, that my goal isn't to take out counter claims, to prosecute cops. My goal is, you know, I just want to avoid it all. I want to get my license back and I want to be able to drive when the burden lies on the state. My civil rights have been violated and it seems like the police don't really acknowledge civil rights. You know, I don't want to be unlawful and I waited the two years. However, you know, there has to be some leniency here. You know what I mean? This is another time that I've gotten my car taken. Now I'll go to court on these charges. I know the judge doesn't want to see me anymore up there. I've tried to get the appeal since I was denied it and he wanted me to see the attorney of the day. I did that. And I wrote, she said, maybe you should write the chairman of the Division of Insurance and I did that. However, today there is light at the end of the tunnel. I'm going to get the appeal. But meanwhile, I feel as though if the state is writing, meaning Brian Murray and Senator Roush, about my civil rights being violated, if it's given to the police, where is the lack of communication? Because I'd like to know. I'd like to know whether the lead detectives is relaying the information. It's the only time when I've had problems. I drove in Bellingham, I drove in Medway this morning, and they seem to be understanding of what I've had to go through as a motorist. You know, a small curb, I bit that and now I'm going in the appeal process and thank God that's coming. But I, I mean, I guess I want to know where the lack of communication is with the lead detective or with the police not listening or what, what the case is. You know, I'm all for being lawful and I've tried and the evidence will show that I've tried. I'm going to bring it before the Milford District Court. I'm going to win these charges too. And the cop did say to me, well, maybe if you get a registration. While I do appreciate them not throwing me in jail, I thought that was nice. But they have to understand, people have civil rights. The burden lies on the state, not me. If I don't get an appeal, I have appeal rights. I mean, I just don't want my civil rights violated anymore, you know? And, you know, I'll win these cases and the judge is upset, they don't want to see me up there. And, I mean, it, it seems to be a repetitious cycle, you know? It just looks suspicious as to why they're not listening to me. My car got towed off again after I just got it out of a repair shop, you know? And I'm only using it just to get food and around here. And I'm like, it's not like I'm going out of town far. You know, I wanted to go to a few restaurants, get some food to go and, you know, of that nature, you know? Maybe get medicine in Worcester. But I never expect this. I never expect this to happen. And, you know, it's come to the point, excuse me, it's come to the point that, and I'm not the only one, that the taxpayers don't want to pay for cops like this. In fact, it's happened so much, it's such a miscarriage of justice with the police that they want to go FBI.
Yeah, but this is about you, okay?
Yeah, yeah. But, but what I'm saying is, and I don't mean any disregard for the chief or anything, he's a great guy, but I mean, they've had so much problems, you know, it's, it's become a movement now that they wanted to fund the police. So it is about me, but it's about other people who have gotten the same thing, other victims.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll take another advisory.
Okay, so can I check back in?
We'll communicate through Mr. Valani.
And he can communicate through the secretary upstairs?
Yes.
I guess I just don't want my civil rights violated. I did what I could. I mean, the evidence will show and I'm going to show it up in the Milford District Court. I did my work hard. I tried to get the appeal and I waited. Once they told me not to drive, I didn't. And I waited for the appeal just like any other appellant. And that's my civil rights. I need to have an appeal.
Paula, you know, the, the police officers have to rely on the information they get from the RMV. So they run your registration, it comes back suspended. The law says they rely on that as a matter of fact. So that's it. So the officer gives you a citation, whether you go to court and win, go to court and lose, the officers, this isn't baseball rules. They're not concerned about whether you win or lose.
Murray's writing, that's like, I guess that's my...
Brian Murray as a state rep or the senator, as a state senator, don't have the authority to tell the police officer whether you're right or not right. They rely on the RMV records. So that said, you know, everyone in Massachusetts, your vehicle has to be insured. Why? Because we want to protect each other should somebody suffer harm. So they rely on what the RMV tells them. If they issue you a citation, you're right. Your, the avenue is to go to the court and address that there. You're also correct that the avenue to correct the issues around your driver's license are to go through the hearing process of the RMV.
And I was willing to do that.
Because the court doesn't handle that, as the judge has told you, Judge Eustace. So you're, you're on the right track to get a resolve. We're not in the position to tell the RMV, no more than the judges, what to do. And whatever they give those police officers for information, they're obligated to rely on it. That's in the law. So as far as defunding the police, frankly, I'll say to you with all due respect, this is probably one of the only communities where people were going the other way. Okay, this is one of the few communities in the state, if not this country, where the residents of the community came out in support of the police rather than defund them. So, well, you may not know, that's why I'm trying to give you some information so that you will know.
But if I keep winning cases, that is raising...
It's not, it's not an issue of whether you go to court and win. This isn't baseball rules. This is the officers doing their job based on what the law says and what the RMV...
I'm telling them, I'm telling them.
And the RMV gives them.
And I had to bite in when Mr. Foss took it for a little curb. He knew that that wasn't enough.
Mr. Foss is filing an immediate threat, is in the statutes. It spells out exactly when they should do it, how they should do it. If you disagree with it, your remedy is to go to an RMV hearing. We don't have the authority to tell them not to do their job. We don't have that authority, no more than we have any authority to tell the fire department, don't go put that house out.
Well, that's why I gave it to Mr. Murray, give it to the police with the evidence. I showed him all that.
Mr. Murray doesn't have the authority to tell the police what to do. Respectfully, he doesn't, no more than we do as a board. We don't have the authority to tell that police officer, don't do your job in this instance.
I guess what I'm saying is I think it's falling under more than what just they're doing their job.
This is invitation to speak. You've made your statement. We appreciate it.
We do.
Tried to give you some information.
Yeah, and I appreciate it.
But it isn't for us to go back and forth. That's not what invitation is.
You know how to take that citation to court. We, we both know that. And you know how to get a hearing at the registry. You're on the right track. That's where you're going to resolve.
Can I give you at least the information that I, that I...
For what purposes?
This is regarding the appeal, this is...
Your appeals should be with the registry.
But I, I'm trying to show you, I'm doing my part, you know?
No, no, I know you are. I don't question that for 10 seconds.
We appreciate that.
I didn't like the way I was treated. I didn't feel as though that I got equal protection like everybody else in the registry, you know?
As you said, the officer treated you well.
He didn't put me in jail, but he still towed the car against, you know, what I told him.
He's, well, then he treated you half well.
Half well. Okay. But meanwhile, my car's impounded and I, yeah.
And that's, I know that's difficult. I do. So your recourse is at the district court and beyond that, your recourse is, as you own, to a hearing at the, you know, the RMV. That's where your recourse is.
Okay. If you haven't hear, hear any feedback from the police department, I can certainly...
Thank you very much.
Feel free to give Mr. Valani a call.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, next agenda item is any correspondence. Any member have any correspondence?
I do not, Mr. Chairman. I do not either. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Oh, I'm sorry, something's...
No, don't worry about it. That's fine. That's nothing. Don't worry about it. Take care.
Take care, Paula.
And I don't have any correspondence. We've already had our executive session, so with that, I will make a motion to adjourn our regular session meeting.
And I will second that, Mr. Chairman.
Make it unanimous.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you very much for tuning in to us and hope you have a good evening and a nice rest